Good evening, I am going to call to order the May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four school committee meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording and we are recording on Zoom. Four minutes, purposes of the minutes. Is anybody else in the audience or online recording or planning to take pictures? Okay, we've got one person taking pictures. Nobody else? Okay, alright, so we are going to move on to item number two, approval of minutes. We have four sets on tonight's agenda, however, we're going to table two point three. So we'll start with two point one.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and that's the salary negotiations subcommittee with participation of the full school committee.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Nope, okay, alright, so the minutes are approved, we will table two point three until the next meeting. Item three is a school showcase, I think this is our last one for the year, the Hingham Middle School, so I will pass it over to Derek Smith.
Alright, thanks very much, I didn't realize we were the closing act for the school showcases, so.
Going out with a bang.
Quite an honor. I'm always happy to join school committee, particularly proud this evening because we have some of our finest students and one of our finest organizations represented here. We thought this was a great opportunity to share with the community what the HMS Ambassador Club is, what it's all about, some of the things that they've done, and there's no better group to do that than the four young ladies here this evening, Paige Hutchinson, Lexi Grimm, Casey Tean, and Ellie Rogers, eighth graders who will be moving on to the high school next year, probably continuing the same great work there that they've done with us for the past three. We're also joined by Mr. Tim Galvin, eighth grade math teacher co-advisor to this excellent organization. So I could tell you all about the Ambassador Club, but they are the experts on this. So we're going to turn it over to these four, who will talk to you about what it is that the club is, what they do, and why it's an important group to them. Thank you very much, come on up, ladies.
Hi, everyone, my name is Paige Hutchinson and I'm here with Casey Tean. Ellie Rogers.
And Lexi Grimm.
And we're all eighth graders a part of the Hingham Middle School Ambassador's Club. The Ambassador Club is a group of kids from every grade who come together after school every week to plan events, spirit weeks, and ways to raise money for local organizations like the Ellie Fund and Maddie's Promise.
The club's goal, along with planning various events and fundraisers, is to create a positive, inclusive, and welcoming community at HMS. We've rallied a group of almost one hundred students throughout the year to participate in the Ambassador Club. Some of our biggest meetings have had fifty students at a time.
One example of an event the club has planned is Wear Pink Day in support of the Ellie Fund. The Ellie Fund is a local organization that provides support and services to people undergoing treatment for breast cancer. We have raised a total of about five thousand dollars from our fundraisers both last year and this year.
We also had a Wear Purple Day to raise money for Maddie's Promise. We raised over six thousand dollars in donations in clothing sales last year, and we are having another Wear Purple Day next week on Thursday, May thirtieth.
Another event planned by the club was Stand Up To Hate Day, when everyone dressed in blue and donated to support the stop of antisemitism in all forms of hate. Blue Day tied into last year's summer reading book length and lots of participation was shown.
Ambassador Club has not only impacted our Hingham Middle School community, but also every member as well. Ambassador Club has helped me make many great friendships and made middle school very enjoyable for me. It gives me a place to plan events in our school and just relax when I need to. There's a great group of people in this club who are all very kind to each other. Everyone in the club has the same goal to make our school a better place.
Being in the Ambassador Club has taught me that community is capable of change for the better. Even though we're middle schoolers, we are making change while having fun. I remember my first day of Ambassador Club in December of sixth grade. Instantly, it was a warm, welcoming environment where I became so much closer to some of my best friends. The lessons I learned in Ambassador Club will stay with me for the rest of my life.
Ambassador Club has had a positive impact on my life and others. Although we are heading to the high school in the fall, I am going to cherish the fun activities we planned, organizations we helped, and the friendships I've made. More importantly, I'm going to remember how Ambassador Club has shaped me into a better person.
Ambassador Club has taught me about the things a group can accomplish when hard work and dedication are poured into it. It has shown me a great sense of community and that people will work together in support of a cause they care about. I'm so honored to be a part of a club with such amazing ethics and members, and I'm truly going to miss it a lot next year. Thank you, Mr. Galvin, for leading this special club, and thank you all for listening.
So it's easy to see why this group was chosen as our school showcase. They do great work, but also they get a lot out of it personally. They put as much into it as any other group or organization that you'll find throughout this district, but it is really driven in large part by the interests of the students and great leadership from Mr. Galvin and Ms. Cassidy. I couldn't be prouder of what they do, and when we had the opportunity to showcase something, they were the first group that came to mind. Plus, I knew they'd do a great job. They pulled it all together, those are all their own words. So I want to thank all the participants for being here this evening and thank you for the time allowed to share our school showcase.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you coming in and I love your message about community, I think it's so important, so I think you can continue that anywhere, it doesn't have to be in school, it can be right around town, because we can certainly all, you know, come together as one, so I love the messages, so I appreciate it. Great messages, thank you to these fabulous young ladies who led this group, it was really fantastic, and also to Mr. Galvin and Ms. Cassidy. I know Ms. Cassidy very well from my own kids when they were in the Ambassador Club, and they're still doing volunteer work, so it does stay with you. But thank you so much, because I know it's a lot of work to run these extra curricular things, but it's such great for the school spirit, for the school morale, and lifelong lessons that the kids take, so thank you very much. My daughter was one of the people who got the opportunity to have Mr. Galvin for three years, that doesn't happen very much, so she is going to be so jealous that I got to see you tonight. So thank you very much. We have another exciting presentation. Item number four is presentation of the U.S. Department of State Medallion Certificate to Hingham High and the Hingham Public Schools. So we have a Hingham resident who has two exchange students, both at the high school, who are here through a Department of State program, and they're going to be giving us a presentation about the impact of the exchange program and to acknowledge the efforts of continuing to promote cultural diversity and intercultural education, so welcome.
Thank you. Okay. A very good evening to everyone. What a blissful moment it is to be standing here in front of respectful committees and members of the floor. My name is Sophie Salehin, and I am honored to be delivering this speech while donning my traditional clothing, which is known as a kebabaya for this special occasion. Hingham High School has participated in the AFS Exchange Program for over fifty years, but most people don't know that this is a very special year. Anna and I are participants in a Department of State Exchange Program called the Kennedy-Lugar Youth Exchange and Study Program, or YES. The YES Program has started in two thousand and three by Senator Edward Kennedy to help bridge international and cultural divides between high school students in the U.S. and in countries with significant Muslim populations. I, who comes from Malaysia, and Anna, who is from Bulgaria, are two out of tens of thousands of teenagers who applied for this opportunity to come and spend a semester or a year at a high school in America. We are so grateful that we were selected and immensely delighted that Hingham High School accepted us as students. We would like to present this medallion from the U.S. Department of State, the Hingham High School Committee, in recognition of the important role that the Hingham Public School System has played this year in the diplomatic goals of the U.S. Department of State. This medallion demonstrates a commitment to the academic and cultural enrichment of your students as you build the global leaders of tomorrow. On this special night, we would like to thank the Hingham Public Schools, the staff of Hingham High School, particularly Mr. Swanson, who saved my day, and everyone who has supported our participation in the YES Program this year. We will never forget the hospitality you have shown us or the friends we have made this year. Lastly, Hingham High School will always be in our hearts and mind. We will forever cherish all the moments we've spent this year. That is all from me, thank you so much for listening.
Can I get a picture of everyone? Do you want a quick picture? Wait, can you hear for my eyes? I'm crying. Sorry. No, no, no. Okay. Sorry. Yeah, everybody, back here. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. 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 Thank you for your patience while we entered that quick picture. We have one lone person in the audience. Okay, so item number five is questions and comments. This is the part of the meeting where we have set aside fifteen minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. We typically will allow for questions or comments on new business items, so if there's something on the agenda for a new business, or, you know, if you can hold on, but if there's something that is not on the agenda and you would like to speak to it, if you could raise your hand and I will read my statement. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we're gonna move on to item six. Alright, so item six is superintendent's report. Dr. Adams.
So in my report for this meeting, I'm glad to remind the community and the committee that we were excited last week to announce Jen Driscoll as the new assistant principal for the South School. She serves currently as a social studies teacher at the Hingham Middle School, and has also been leading the teacher mentorship program for Hingham for several years. She's gone above and beyond, deeply involved in Hingham Public Schools for many years, and we're glad to welcome her to the South School Village. We continue to work on interviews for the director of facilities, we're continuing with two interviews this week and hope to have some site visits scheduled for the following week to be able to appoint someone to that position as well. I was honored to also attend the Hingham High School Scholarship Committee. We had a hundred and eighty-one students apply for scholarships. All the students who apply will receive a scholarship, three hundred and thirty. Remember, earlier this year, we learned that Hingham Middle School had been identified as an attendance priority school. Schools that were identified as attendance priority schools had chronic absenteeism rates that were higher than the statewide pre-pandemic rate and did not make significant strides in decreasing it. It looks like we are dropping at the middle school at this point in the year, not reaching pre-pandemic levels, but it's going in the right direction in all of the schools. I think it's an effort that we need to begin at the beginning of next year. I think it's something that we need to help families understand the importance of student attendance and get back to those pre-pandemic numbers. I think we kind of see from the research that much of what we're hearing is that families kind of underestimate the impact that absenteeism has on academic and also social emotional learning, and the importance of those routines, so that's something we can work on, and perhaps next year we can do some periodic updates on a, maybe quarterly or three times a year on how we're doing on attendance. Trying to think about attendance, especially at the middle school and high school, as a measure to help us support MTSS data too as well. So that's something we can work on for next year, is use this as a measure to help support students who may be struggling, as well as an indicator of our MTSS implementation at the middle and high school especially. The school building committee met on May eighth. As you saw in the community update, we learned that we will not be able to occupy the new elementary building in September or the beginning of the school year. We don't have a date, they're expecting maybe early October, but it's really dependent on the project manager, the contractor, and the school building committee when we might be able to occupy the building. Preferably, a move-in date that happens during the school year would happen around some sort of long weekend or vacation break, which would either be Indigenous Peoples' Weekend or Thanksgiving or Christmas, the holiday winter break in December. So more to come on that, as we hear more information from the school building committee on the status of the building and when we could occupy it sometime in the fall. Want to add something?
Sure, go ahead. But just to clarify for folks, the delays are sort of multifaceted, there wasn't really just any one thing, it was the weather, it was some of the site work at the beginning of last year that put us back a couple of weeks, supply chain, and also through a labor shortage. I think initially the plan was that we would have people on site six days a week, they were having trouble getting people on to six days, so then there was sort of talk about we could, you know, if we pushed it and had people coming seven days a week, but then we're like, but we're not even getting there six days, like what makes us think we're miraculously going to be able to get people to come two more days? So those were all sort of the issues, it wasn't really just any one thing or sort of variety of.
And those are all reasons that everyone's saying in the industry, it's not just...
Yes.
Those are all very common reasons.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's helpful here, like there were people saying, like, you know, what is the reason, it is, I mean, I assumed it was that, giving that context is helpful that it wasn't something, I don't know what else it would be, but...
Yes, nothing financial, right, a little bit to be expected.
I think they're like, if they had another six weeks, they would have been right on target, but it's just...
Can I add one other question? I've got a fair amount. The process of whenever that move happens, or the changeover, like, what actually has to happen during that? Like, if people are asking, I'm like, I don't know, I think they need to like knock the building down, and like, can you just talk a little bit about like what that looks like? Because I'm, I guess myself having a hard time seeing how that could happen in three days, but...
So we'd have to give teachers time to pack up, usually that's a day. There's movers that come in, big movers come in, move all the stuff, and place it in the right place, in the right classroom, and then we give teachers potentially another day to unpack their classrooms, get it ready, and then the next day, students are able to come into the new building, and then the old, the front structure, they'll start to work on abatement and then demolition. Obviously, that was supposed to happen during the summer, but that's not going to happen, you know, now during the summer, it'll have to be pushed back, that schedule is also pushed back quite a bit. So there's kind of, students are moving to the new building, and then they start working on the old foster and the work that needs to be done there. The roads, the entry, all of that, parking, playground would be all ready for the new school, it would just be, they're moving behind, and the construction site now moves back to the front.
And we can add, that makes it that simple. You just tell me to stop asking questions whenever you want.
No, that's okay.
How does it work with like, would teachers have to come in like over the weekend or over a break to do that, or is like...
Yeah, we'd have to figure that out and find out, there could be some additional costs for paying teachers for those additional days. Obviously, coming in on the weekend is not likely, we need to use, you know, school time, or time during the week for them to do that, so. Usually, teachers are paid for those two days in some way, and then those two days get added, foster has a different schedule, they get added two days somewhere in the school calendar in order to make up those days, because they have to be in school a hundred and eighty days.
I think that would be helpful, I don't, like, again, I'm an advocate of foster, I don't know if that even occurred to me, and my guess is that people haven't thought about it, so I'm not saying we need to like get something out tomorrow on that, but like, setting the expectation for the foster community that they're potentially going to school two days later in the school year, or it seems like that almost would have to happen, would be important to do.
Yeah, it's kind of hypothet, we just don't have enough detail about the when this will happen, which will be really important, because that'll kind of stage when, when those two additional days could be made up, whether they're at the end of the school year, if there's another opportunity in the school calendar to make up. So we're kind of waiting for the go-ahead to see when it might make sense for that to happen.
Thank you.
I also provided you some updates on the progress of the foster, the new foster, and there's continual work being done, deliveries, equipment being installed, geothermal equipment is being scheduled to be delivered at the end of May, mechanical room equipment is being delivered as well and then installed, drywall installation is going on in Area B, windows are being delivered and installed as well, so progress is being made, but just not fast enough to get us into the building at the end of August. And thank you for those questions. Second, I provided you a timeline for the recruitment and appointment of a principal for high school. You heard on Friday, the school community heard about Mr. Swanson's resignation. We first want to thank Mr. Swanson for over seventeen years of service to the public schools, Hingham Public Schools, both as an assistant principal, high school principal, he's done great work around establishing, we heard tonight around a focus on global education and awareness, as well as, school is known for its green initiatives and its focus on supporting young people and understanding the importance of taking care of the earth. So we're grateful for those initiatives and hope to inspire to continue that focus with new, with different leadership at the high school. The posting went up today, you'll see it's a very aggressive recruitment schedule, hiring schedule, we want to be able to get input from staff, students, and families, and we have a very short window to do so. So the position was posted today, we are going to start working on getting some feedback, which will include a day next week where Ms. Roberts and I will be spending time hearing from staff, hearing from students, hearing from families, similar to what we did at South. We spent the whole day, just listened and kind of heard what was important to the community in new principal at the high school. We'll begin doing screening at the same time of the applicants, then the following week, first week in June, doing some interviews of those resumes, looking at those resumes, screening those applicants, then second week in June, hopefully having folks on site, be able to meet staff, students, and families, and then get feedback in a second round as well. So it's very aggressive, but we're going to, we started working on it already and we'll start moving as quickly as possible. Later on this week, probably about midweek, I'll also post an interim high school principal, so in case we don't have a viable search that leads to a viable candidate, we'll be able to have some potential applicants who might be interested in just a one-year appointment. So that's just in case, and we'll begin looking at those as well as we're doing the screening of the full applicants. And I also provided a...
Huh? So I like that idea, to post them both.
Yeah, I provided you a copy of the job description as well, so I can see that.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, item seven point two, student communications. So later?
Alright, don't worry, this is a short one tonight. So orchestra and choir did an amazing job in their performances last week, but don't worry if you missed it, because men's choir is getting ready for their final performance this, on Memorial Weekend. Sophomores are prepping for the dreaded MCAS tomorrow. Seniors are getting ready for their graduation rehearsal on the twenty-ninth, and I expect that they're excited to finally adorn their red robes on the July first. Freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and departing seniors are sad to say goodbye to Prince Will Swanson, but wish him all the best as he transitions to the very fortunate Silverlake Eye.
Thank you very much. Alright, item seven point three, does anybody have anything under other communications? I did have one thing, I sent to the committee a letter that we received from, on May ninth, from the town administrator, just regarding the understanding of how the FY twenty-five out of district tuition should be paid, so you guys have all seen that. Item eight, unfinished business. So we have four policies that were, we had a first read of the last time we met, this one is to have our second read and act as appropriate, I'm going to pass it over to Carrie, who's going to take us through these.
Great, so these are some fairly minor changes to the, to our non-discrimination policies, it's, there's a paragraph in, a number of policies in our handbook that talk about the protected classes, so this is in here, because there is an act prohibiting discrimination based on natural and protective hairstyles that was enacted by Mass General Law in two thousand and twenty-two, so this is just updating our list to include that. So the first one is AC, which is the non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Does anyone have any questions?
No. Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the changes to policy AC, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? No, okay.
Okay, the next one is GBA, equal employment opportunity, and again, it's the same revision to the list of protected people.
I will make a motion to approve the changes to policy GBA, equal employment opportunity.
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, next one is eight point three, this is policy GCF, professional staff hiring, again, just changing the list.
I will make a motion to approve the changes to policy GCF, professional staff hiring.
A second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, and finally, we have IJ instructional materials, and this, it's just the same, it's the same list, and it's about the curriculum materials, and they won't discriminate based on these protected classes.
I will make a motion to approve the changes to policy IJ instructional materials.
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Just getting the groove there. Right, exactly. Alright, item nine, new business. So nine point one is to receive an update on the technology plan and act as appropriate.
Alright, I'm back again this evening for the second of three plans that are offshoots of the strategic plan. So last school committee, I presented on the professional development plan, and tonight I'll be sharing an update on our progress towards goals in the district technology plan. You can click the next one. Thank you, thanks, Carrie. Great, and so just a reminder again of the three plans, the professional development plan update that was shared on May ninth, this evening's technology plan, and the third plan is the equity plan, which we'll update to you later in June or July. And the third plan is the equity plan, which will update, um, uh, to you later in June or July. Um, so just to, uh, remind ourselves of the Hingham Technology Vision Statement. Um, our statement is that HPS students and educators will innovate, create and collaborate. Through equitable access to a technology-rich environment, supported by a robust infrastructure. And will integrate technology purposefully and responsibly to access and construct knowledge, effectively communicate and support creative expression. And this vision statement is played out, um, throughout the four, uh, major strands of goals related to the technology plan. Um, so tonight I'll be sharing an update on digital literacy and computer science curriculum work. I'll share some, um, updates on infrastructure, uh, data and privacy, universally designed technology integration. And personalized professional learning. Um, so this year we made some great progress, um, with regard to digital literacy curriculum. Um, as I shared during our professional development presentation, the last two years, we've had a major focus on, uh, developing. Um, unit guides that are aligned to standards and the, uh, digital literacy teachers, um, it, and the librarians. Did a terrific work on their unit guides, which have much of the work embedded around computational thinking standards and digital literacy. We'll continue to refine, uh, those unit guides in year two of the plan. Associated with that unit guide work, um, the computer science and librarians also developed some assessments. Um, that will allow us to assess, um, uh, mastery of the standards related to digital literacy and computer science. Um, so those, uh, assessments were developed this year and they will be piloted next year, um, in classrooms across the district. Um, another area related to curriculum that we made progress on this year is researching what offerings in the field of computer science. Other districts offer at the secondary level, so we currently offer, um, AP computer science. We have an intro to computer science course and we have, um, a tech squad course. We had explored offering in addition to AP computer science, um, there is also an AP computer science principles course. Um, that we explored offering, we did in fact include it in the program of studies, uh, this year. However, we did not have many registrants for that course, so, uh, while the research was done, uh, we will not be proceeding with AP computer science principles. Uh, for next year. Um, the fourth, uh, goal on this, uh, strand is really, uh, defining digital literacy. And digital citizenship proficiency skills for our grade six to twelve students. So once again, this looks like working with both our librarians and our computer science teachers, um, to outline those skills. It also though is cross-cutting across departments, and so our secondary students, um, do integrate those digital literacy skills. And is digital citizenship skills across, um, content areas. And, uh, it comes as no surprise, one major focus for us this year was around the integration of AI, um, across content areas. And what that means, uh, for academic integrity, so I wanted to thank the members of our English department who really took the lead on some of that work. Um, they developed, um, a really, uh, robust, um, set of expectations for students. Around AI and how that is appropriately used, um, I've in fact shared that with other districts who are very appreciative of the work of our, um, English teachers. And, uh, Andy Hoy and his department also adopted that, so along with the expectations, there's, um, a continual reinforcement. Of those expectations and best practices, um, in the use of AI, so again, um, an evolving story and a work that will be ongoing. Uh, next up, infrastructure, uh, data and privacy, wanted to thank, uh, Joe Andrews for her, his work, um, on this, uh, uh, set of goals. And so, uh, Joe Andrews this year replaced our aging smart boards, um, across the, uh, district, across the high school rather. Uh, with ViewSonic viewboards, so as I've, um, mentioned in previous meetings. Um, doing an initiative like this with devices, it's a little bit like purchasing all-new appliances, um, in a home. And that ten years, uh, later, eleven years later, they all go at the same time, so it really is important for us to be, um, uh, refreshing. Uh, those, um, units on, um, an ongoing basis, and so this year, the project was tackled at the high school. Next up, um, on deck is the middle school and foster school with the new building, um, every classroom will be getting a view board. Um, I mentioned during our professional development, uh, presentation last week, in addition to the physical installation, um, I mentioned in the professional development plan. Um, some of the great, um, PD that went along with that. Um, in addition to replacing the smart boards, um, Mr. Andrews also, uh, replaced wireless access points at the middle school. Um, next, up on deck next year will be, uh, continued work at the high school. Um, he continues to refresh our one-to-one Chromebooks at the middle school. And also, um, refreshed some of our Chromebooks at the elementary level this year focusing on the grade two Chromebooks. Uh, next year there'll be some continued work at the elementary level. Um, also associated with the smart, uh, the ViewSonic installation at the high school. Um, Joe Andrews also replaced the high school desktops, uh, with hub monitors, uh, to support the use of staff laptops. Uh, with the docking station, uh, that integrates seamlessly with the ViewSonic boards. Um, he will continue that work next year at both the middle school and, uh, at Foster. A sort of a collaborative goal between, uh, Joe Andrews Department and the content directors. Is, uh, in initiating a research and development process for implementing emerging technology, most notably AI as I mentioned. Um, and also reviewing different, uh, district and school technology staffing models, so that is work that is ongoing. Um, and we, uh, continue to research, um, emerging technologies. Um, another goal, um, that is again a shared goal between the technology department and the content directors. Is an annual, annual review of our educational, uh, technology app usage, uh, to ensure that we are, um. But really making best use of the technology funds that we have available to us. Um, so we certainly, um, uh, take a look at not only the foundational apps, but all of the apps that are supporting curriculum and instruction. And so, um, we meet, um, a couple times a year, um, again, to take a look at usage and see how effectively, um, the apps are being used. And then a final goal, um, under infrastructure data and policy, um, for an update this year. Is around assessing our communications system, including the parental notification and district website. And, um, so, uh, Heather Cashman has been hard at work on the work around the district website. Uh, you'll be hearing more from her when she presents the communication plan about the district, um, shift, uh, to a new website platform. And, uh, Joe Andrews also has been, um, as part of this goal here, uh, transitioning, uh, to a paper cut, uh, system. Um, two goals, just, um, so you're aware of two goals that are in the pipeline for next year. Uh, one is replacement of the core hyper-converged infrastructure, Joe can better explain, uh, what that, uh, uh, particular initiative is about. And also implementing obviously the technology plan for the new, uh, uh, elementary school building, so once Foster opens. Um, in addition to, uh, the ViewSonic board, um, Joe will also, um, be ensuring that all of the technology in that building. Is up and running for our staff and students. Um, goal three is around instructional practices, a lot of overlap between this goal and our professional development plan. Um, so during the professional development plan presentation, you heard about our inclusive practice fellows initiative. Um, a similar initiative, um, that we undertook this year was our grade six, uh, six to twelve technology integration fellows. Um, who participated in a year-long, uh, professional development training. That was focused on a couple of different areas, one was around, uh, the integration of ed tech to support universal design for learning. Another major theme was around AI and its use, um, in education. So very grateful, um, to the technology fellows, not only for their participation in professional development, um, themselves. But also for the sharing that they did during our, uh, ed tech symposium hosted by our tech fellows in February. Where all middle school and high school teachers were, um, able to select, um, from, I believe it was twelve different offerings. Offered by, um, our tech fellow staff, in addition, a number of them have participated in other projects. Uh, on that theme of emerging technologies and helping us to, um, do some of that research, so again, very, uh, grateful to the internal capacity that we have. Within our, um, teaching faculty. Um, another goal and around instructional practices relates to our ongoing work to update our D cap. Our district curriculum accommodation plan, um, that, uh, document, uh, focuses on, uh, using instructional practices. And technology tools in order to, um, accommodate, uh, students and ensure the success of all students. So you'll be hearing more about our D cap, um, in June or July of this year. And next year we'll continue to monitor the implementation of the D cap. And, um, as part of this plan, look at, um, uh, some examples of effective technology integration to support, uh, UDL. Um, a goal that, um, is one that will be ongoing next year as well, this year we did some research and planning. Uh, for, for future expansion of elementary makerspaces across our four elementary schools. Um, you have heard, um, from E-School about their, um, really successful makerspace, uh, program that they have. And so next year we do hope to scale that work up across the district. In addition, our LMC, our librarians have been exploring implementing what we call a genius hour. That, um, will allow student choice in their project-based learning. And so again, this year was really more about the research, although we did a small pilot, um, of the genius hour at South School this year. And, um, so more to come on that for next year. Uh, another goal under instructional, um, practices, I can't do a presentation without, without using the term MTSS, so here we go. Um, so one, um, area for technology is to evaluate the impact of some of the instructional technology that we've integrated. Uh, into M- MTSS, including as you would imagine, iReady, um, our Acadians, um, and some of the dashboards and tools. Uh, that we're now using to gather data, um, so we'll continue to evaluate, um, the tools that we're using, the impact that it has. And, um, continue to keep our eye on our MTSS data. Last, uh, set of goals, um, goal four is on the domain of personalized professional learning. Um, and so we during, um, COVID had several of our teachers. Who developed this really, uh, robust platform that we call our Tech Tools PD, um, with, uh, which has asynchronous modules. That continue to be very useful, uh, to staff to this day. We use that Tech, um, Tools module to onboard new staff to all of the technology in our district. And so one of our goals was to continue to refresh, um, that Tech Tools, uh, Google Classroom platform. Um, so it is current, and so this year, for example, some of the modules that were developed to support staff. In implementing the ViewSonic boards, that is now an asynchronous module that will live in this Google Classroom. And so as new staff come onboard next year, they can access all of the training, um, asynchronously, uh, through that Google Classroom. Um, as I mentioned, we will have an ongoing plan, uh, for professional development, um, to support staff. As we roll out ViewSonic boards across the district with the high school this year, middle school and foster next year. And elementary will be, um, in the pipeline in the following years. Um, this year also on the theme of PD, uh, we did train both the leadership team and administrative assistants. On our student information system, so, um, there are a lot of, uh, features of that, um, that our administrative assistants and leadership. Were not, um, aware of, and so we'll continue, um, to build the skill and capacity of our leaders on the information system. And we also, as you heard from Dr. Cataldo's recent presentation, uh, we trained our special education staff. Um, on the new AIP and as part of that, there is, um, some additional, um, technology, um, integration of that, um, initiative. And then finally, um, this year we did develop some offerings, including asynchronous modules for caregivers. Uh, to familiarize themselves with district technology, we made a big push this year to get every family in the district up and running. On our Aspen portal, and, um, that's been, uh, really, um, a great effort by the principals, um, to, uh, convey that information. And we'll continue to look at, um, different technology apps that we use in town and see what might be helpful information for our caregivers, um, to have. And that, I believe, is the technology plan, so, any questions?
On the last point about the asynchronous modules for families and caregivers, have, do you have a sense of how many are taking advantage of those?
So I, I think that those asynchronous modules are helpful, but we're also complementing it with some in-person work. Um, so I know that Derek Smith, for example, when he recently had parents in the building for an open house night. Had some laptops or, um, Chromebooks rather, open, um, so families could, um, try it out in the moment and seek help. So I do think a combination of asynchronous and in-person when we have a captive audience, um, is a good combination, so.
Yeah, people have been talking about that for years, so I think it's great.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, um, uh, two things, I think, um, on the ViewSonic boards, I heard a little bit of mixed feedback on those at the beginning of the year. Have they, have they sort of got used to them and, I mean, they do seem like they would be much more advanced than what we had.
Absolutely, so I do think, um, similar to the way smart boards was a learning curve. I do think ViewSonics will similarly be a learning curve and, um. Uh, it, when we think about universal design for learning, we have a range of learners amongst our, um, faculty. In the same way that we would have a range of learners amongst our students. And so, um, some of the initial training that we did, I think was a bit higher level, um, than, uh, was appropriate for introducing it. And so, um, I do think for our future rollout, um, day one, teachers need to be able to plug it in, turn it on and project slides. Then the next month, we will introduce kind of the next skill and tool, um, so I do think, um, we might have provided too much information. Upfront and have a better sense now of how to, um, kind of scaffold, um, some of the learning over time. Yeah, yeah, and I do think there was, um, some unevenness in, uh, the rollout of the docking station. So that was kind of an additional skill of mirroring that to the board, and so, um, very grateful to the high school staff who went, uh, first in this initiative. And again, we, um, learn from every implementation and now have, um, a plan to refine that for next year.
Remember that the reason for replacing those is the project, the LCD projectors themselves are aging.
Yes.
Um, and, um, just need to be replaced, so that's, we're getting ahead of that.
Yes.
Placing them with the latest technology.
And again, very grateful, wanted to, um, mention, uh, Sarah Jacobson, um, is one of our all-star, um, high school teachers. Who, uh, attended, uh, uh, ViewSonic Train the Trainer session. And she, um, was really instrumental in rolling this out, she was a tech trainer in a past, uh, in a past life. And so has a lot of skill in this area and, um, did a great job of not only, uh, doing the professional development, but also helping to troubleshoot.
We'd be remiss not to thank Mr. Andrews, who just arrived, also.
That's okay. Joe is here, if you have any questions about the hypercore, was it?
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, for coming tonight and for your work on, um, the infrastructure, um, needed to support the, the teaching and marketing.
Great, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's see, item nine point two, to discuss the appointment of executive director of student services and act as appropriate. Dr. Robbins, you're taking this one?
Yeah, so you have a memo, um, in your packet, um, to recommend to the school committee. A one-year appointment of Dr. Barbara Cataldo for a second year as an interim executive director of student services. For July first to June thirtieth, um, this is after unfortunately, um, similar to last year. We were unable to find a permanent replacement, um, the position was posted once, it had one applicant who was not qualified for the position. Was posted again, we did have a handful more of applicants. Um, Tim Miller Dempsey and Michelle Ayer were on the committee that reviewed those, which left two, that committee, we interviewed two. Um, them, two applicants, one, um, dropped out, and then the second applicant, after reference checks, did not have the experience. Um, to be able to take the position, um, so we are grateful, as you know, Dr. Cataldo was a finalist for another position in another district. Um, she has agreed to continue with us for a second year, um, we've benefited, um, as a central office team from her expertise. Um, and during this time, as you know, she's been able to lead us through a special ed program evaluation. And will help us, um, in the implementation and development of our plan, um, and begin the first year of that implementation for next. first year of that implementation for next year.
Thank you.
I totally support this. I think she's been a welcome addition and it's the right answer. Maybe this is the time to talk about it, but you know, obviously, we've gone through this now a couple of years in a row. And I know it's hard, you know, I don't think this is unique to Hingham or anything like that, but are we thinking about, is there anything that we can do differently to not be in the same situation, I guess, next year to hopefully get a more robust applicant pool?
Yeah, we might consider changing the name of the position to Assistant Superintendent, and we can discuss that through the budget process. It wouldn't change necessarily the salary, it would still be a very competitive salary for a title, but it may be a title change that may be one way, one idea of others. We, I think the program evaluation and continuing to strengthen our relationships with CPAC and special education parents, if we can continue, you know, it's been a challenging year with lots of things going on, if we can start the fall with that sort of in mind and sort of help promote what we're doing to support and build special education programming, we've identified some needs, and here we're setting a plan to put those things into action and to address that. I think we can better attract an applicant who could come in and sort of continue that work that's been started next year. So that, I think, will also help to sort of end, to come back, I mean, we've promised to have an action plan to you by the end of June, hopefully, beginning of July, we're working on it. And then to provide periodic updates throughout the year on our progress toward this step plan, so that we're saying, here's how far we've gotten, we haven't gotten this far on this, and this is why, but we're continuing to work on it so that we add more transparency to how we're addressing the needs and concerns that have been raised.
I just want to echo some of what Margaret, Dr. Adams, said about the search committee, that this was a real search, this was a robust search, and we really took a good look at the applicants. And this, this was, at the end of the day, sort of the, you know, not an ideal solution because I don't think people need two years of an interim Executive Director of Special Student Services. But I was, and this might also be in an area where titles are important, because when I think of an interim, I think of someone who's there to keep the lights on and let the dust settle so that we can do a full search. I think Barbara's been more than an interim, even though it's been a temporary position. I think she's really sort of an expert in this work who's looking at making some substantial changes to special ed. So I think it's, in her case, more than, even more than even other interims, I think it's appropriate that she stay and really finish the work that she started. And, you know, interim doesn't describe what she does, so.
It has been great that she's been able to continue the movement and the improvement in special education, particularly helping us through with the program evaluation and all that. Is the, I mean, I know it's, it's an issue across the state, I think across the country, is it, is it a lack of people having the qualifications for the role? Is it a lack of people wanting to do the role because it's so challenging? Is it like an aging out of people? Like, has anybody kind of figured out the root cause, or is it sort of a little bit of everything?
I think it's probably a little bit of everything, is that there aren't enough leaders ready to move into those roles. A lot of folks also left the profession or retired after COVID, and so we don't have a pipeline of special education leaders. I think we could say that for lots of leadership positions, principals and superintendents in some cases, so right. So I think there's a need to develop more leaders. And our best bet is to also think internally, if how do we build, and that's in the strategic plan, how do we build, this is a long-term piece, not a short-term, how do we build internal capacity so that we have more leaders who can move into those positions over time? And that's more of a long-term, it's not going to be a short-term solution.
I mean, the one thing that's different about next year is that this will not be an option for next year, you can't get a third year of an interim. So next year, we're going to be in a, you know, dance with whoever shows up situation where if we, if we get a similar group of candidates next year, we're going to have to hire somebody who can grow into the position and really put some serious coaching into it and training, so. That's a different one answer, way to answer the question. I don't know if it's satisfactory.
The, changing the title may also help.
So we need to vote on this, correct?
Yes.
We're on the Dr. Cataldo.
I'm always happy to make a motion. I will make a motion to approve the recommendation from Dr. Adams for one-year appointment of Dr. Barbara Cataldo as the interim Executive Director of Student Services from July 1st, 2024, to July 30th, 2025.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, 9.3, to discuss rates for KIA, student interns, substitutes, summer teachers, and drivers' education and act as appropriate. Is this you, Ayesha?
Thank you. And a late one in the package, right?
Thank you.
So what we've done here is kind of aligned with what we've been doing so far. Increased most of the rates by 3%, except, except for those rates that were kind of, in terms of the, the actual substitute, the actual like teachers or paras or where we haven't finalized contracts yet, or we may have made, we would have had, maybe we have had increases in the substitute rate mid-year. In those cases, like the driver's rate, we changed mid-year. I didn't increase those again. And then the teacher rate and the para rate kept the same as well, too, because generally we wouldn't want the substitute rate to be anywhere different or more than what we offer in people as well, too, right? So those have become, have remained the same until those contracts settle, then maybe we'll come back to the table on those rates. But the, the main ones that we increased were the driver's ed classroom and on-road by a 3%. We did that. For the student help, the first year, we increased it by 3%, but the second and third year, we just left it even because we thought that what we were paying was reasonable, and there was no big push to have to have those rates increase. In terms of the sub rates for bus drivers and van drivers and monitors, those remain the state, the same. The food service sub rate remained the same. The secretary or admin assistant ones, we increased to the $20. And if we did hire any retired or former employees as a sub, that's where we'd use the, the starting rate to be the, for subbing, for subbing as well. Teacher assistants, we kept those the same as what they are until we knew where the contract settled, we can come back to that if we think it's necessary. I didn't want to go ahead based on that. In terms of the driver's ed coordinator, you'll see that this one was a big, kind of a bump here. It's the first time that in a long time that we've actually shown that, or actually brought that to your attention for, I think in the, in the past, we had. But the person who's doing it now is really taking a leadership role in terms of coordinating the program, and is currently getting paid an additional 10 hours per week to do that. So what we've done is just kind of made it an annual stipend and at the same time, bring it to your attention as well, so that we can get your approval on that one. The custodians rates, and we, we kept that the same. Kids in Action, for their subs, we left it the same, but for the teachers and assistant teachers, we increase, we'll be increasing it by 3%. For that one, it's, it's like, they're guidelines, so we'll be meeting with our attorneys to just kind of update the guidelines, and then we'll put in the approved rate and we'll bring the, the contract back to you for approval as well. The guidelines for your approval on contract. And then we also have the summer ESY teachers and RISE teachers. For those, for those two, ESY has changed a little bit this year in terms of what we've advertised. I think in the past, it was for five hours, it went up from, it was from like 9 to 1:45. This year, we're going from 9 to 12 for the elementary, and I think 8:45 to maybe 11:45 for the middle school. So the hours have changed, and we also increased the amount of planning time for ESY this year as well. And have, we also included a, a meeting time where all the teachers could get together and meet with each other. So the program changed a little bit, so the pricing is not, the, the rates are not exactly one-for-one in terms of what you'd have seen in prior years. So just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Okay. What does CBA stand for?
Collective Bargaining Agreement, yeah.
Should we, those ones that we're waiting on the contracts to close, should we approve those contingent and, and change the rate contingent on when those close that you don't have to come back to us, or have it just mirror what, whatever we approve when those contracts get finalized, or no?
I'd say no, just because I, I don't know where they're going to land, and I, I'd prefer to come back to you so that you know exactly where we are.
Okay.
I think if we set a rate here and then go into negotiations with it, that's sort of bargaining away from the table.
No, it's like, we would approve these right here, and then we would raise them as soon as those contracts get finalized. So it would be immediate, but.
The non, the non ones.
Yeah.
Totally makes it so bad.
Yeah, sorry.
I agree, run away from those contracts.
I think the intent is to keep them the same until, and then we'll come back with you, what the increase might be.
And then the driver ed coordinator, is this just, so the, the salary, is that just what, what it looks like annualized?
Annualized.
Okay, got it, okay.
And the cost is covered by the income of the program?
Yes, yes, and we plan to have.
Okay, all right, so make motions to approve all the rates?
Sure.
So we're just doing that, what I said in the motion. Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to, just to see, this, the list as, instead of having to like, call out every single one.
Yeah, she, she wrote the motion out for me.
Love that.
All right, so I will make a motion to approve the non-CBA rates for FY 2025 as listed in the summary pay rate schedule.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, okay, thank you. Thank you for writing out those options. All right, 9.4, 9.5, I don't think we have either one of those, those are grants and donations or surplus.
We do have a last-minute surplus item.
Okay.
For the foster building, well, not a building, the playground, there were some items that will, that will provide it to us for a surplus, and I included it in a schedule in, in the, in the package as well.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see that.
No, sorry, that was the last minute, that's on me, sorry.
So this is current playground equipment?
Yep.
That's in the old playground. There's two items, I believe, a swing set and the gogup pit that will go and be in the new playground, but these are items that, according to Katie Say Claire, cannot be used in other places.
So anything that was going to be reused, I didn't put it in here. It's only the stuff that would be surplus, yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. I will make a motion to declare as surplus items listed in the memo to authorize the executive director.
... that we had tonight, thank you for that, sorry I was late. So we, I think we're going to re-meet the week of the 10th, is what we settled on, June 10th. So I will announce, we will get a date, and I will announce that on, the date on the 3rd, and I'll try to get an agenda out and post it this week, even though that's early, but just so people have notice for it. The Human Rights Commission is meeting right now as we speak, immediately above us. So I look forward to hearing what they're doing at their meeting, and the SNAP Board had a meeting last week, we're making big plans for next year.
Thank you.
So we have some good negotiations news. So last, last Monday, the salary negotiations, and HEA Unit D, which is our administrative assistants, reached a tentative agreement on a new contract. We started meeting with them in, at late August and had a series of collaborative discussions with the negotiating team, and I think it's going to result in an agreement that will benefit both the administrative assistants and the district. I just wanted to note that unlike our other bargaining units, Unit D is brand new, and so what that meant is that we had to pull together an entirely new contract. So I think sometimes it felt like it was dragging on, it, it was remarkably quick as far as how we, how quickly we did that. So we're really grateful to the Unit D bargaining team, Pam Graham, Patricia Wanty, Maria Sandberg, Erica Quark, Denise Stanley, Suzanne McIntyre, and Jaclyn Bopray for their thoughtful collaborative discussions. And I also want to thank Dr. Adams and Ayesha Pong, Michelle Eyre, and Tim, Miller Dempsey for all of the effort and time that you put into this. So just to update everyone on next steps, our attorney is working with the HEA to finalize the document, and then once that's complete, that will go to Unit D.
Yes, we learned that there was some efforts at East Elementary School to name a garden in the back for, for the former assistant principal, Becky Case, who we learned passed away earlier this year. She was a longtime educator here in Hingham Public Schools. They're hoping to call the garden the Case Teaching Garden, and in the memo, you'll see a little plaque that they'd like to dedicate in, in her memory. The, 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 the high school, Mr. Hawes and Ms. Donovan, Dr. Donovan have reviewed the plans with the PTO and school side council, and would like your approval for the dedication of the garden in her, in her honor.
I just want, I just want to say this, this.
I just want, I just want to save the sign.
I think it's really nice that we're memorializing it.
Yes. It's a great tribute to her.
Thank you. All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to name the East Garden after Rebecca Case, past former assistant principal, to be named the Case Teaching Garden.
I will second it. Thank you, Michelle.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next couple of school committee meetings, we've got one on Monday, June 3rd at 6:30. And then the next one after that is June 17th. I can't believe they're checking my June. That one's at 6:30 as well. So we will be adjourning to executive session and we will not be returning. Somebody want to make a motion? Yep.
It's a long one. It's a long one. So we'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to master law, chapter 38, section 21, A3, for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on May 6th, 2024. And the salary negotiations, and to approve minutes of the salary negotiations subcommittee minutes from May 7th, 2024, as the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
To hear a grievance from the Hangham Administrative Association as open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
And to approve and update on negotiations with HEA Unit A, B, and D as open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
One more, next line.
Yep.
And to discuss individual contracts of non-union administrators as executive director of student services and as open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
And so declare. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Matt, Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. We're adjourned.